Is the recorder okay?
I really hit the recorder.
Why isn't it recorded, like when we speak?
That's just audio.
And where is it going?
Just on the tape, I think, isn't it?
That one is on the tape.
It gets put on the website.
Oh, great.
Okay, it is. It is six o'clock, so I'll call the meeting for order. When you call, well, please.
Sure thing. Patty?
Here.
Neah?
Here.
Joan?
Here.
Lisa?
Here.
Brian?
Here.
Item two is consideration and action on consent agenda, which includes approval of minutes of the special meeting on December 6, 2022, and approval of minutes of the regular meeting, October 13, 2022. Does anybody have any comments or a motion? Motion to approve? I have a motion. Is there a second?
I second.
Patty?
Yes.
Neah?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Item three, consideration of items removed from a consent agenda, and there were none. Item four, public appearances, petitions, communications, and personal appearances. Under Oklahoma law, planning commission members are prohibited from discussing or taking any action on items not on today's agenda. And I don't believe there's anything. So we will move on to item five, public hearing, consideration and possible action regarding ordinance 491, 2022, amending Perkins City Code Title 10, Planning and Zoning, Chapter 12, Land subdivisions, Section 10-12-14, sidewalks in Section 10-12-11, charity bond.
This is an ordinance that... This is Tammy Ewing, the city attorney.
Nice meeting you.
I spent time with Tammy going over this. As a result of the recent growth that's taken place, we noticed, or I noticed some issues that I would like to have changed in the ordinance that I think made sense. Tammy has a redline copy, but I'll kind of quickly go through the changes.
Oh, okay.
As I remember them. It's in 1012-14, sidewalks shall be required in all residential subdivisions on at least one side. The big changes here, the commission may require a performance guarantee that requires with the Section 101211. This is changing "shall" to "may" to give the commission some latitude should they need it for some reason. I don't know of a specific reason, but just make it a little where they can move around if they need to. And then in B, sidewalks absent a waiver of the commission, sidewalks are required on both sides of the street within 2,000 feet of a school. And that absent a waiver from the commission is the same thing. If for some reason, there's some design that makes sense to have it on one side, it would give the commission some latitude to move around.
That's the added language.
Yeah, and that's added to... On the distance with 2,000 feet is added, right?
No, just the absent.
Just the absent waiver from the commission is the added part. And then we changed in Section D, the minimum width from four to five feet and five to six feet, respectively.
That's good.
To make them a little wider. And then on the performance bond part, okay, we didn't change anything. That's the changes in that ordinance. Tammy can go over it a little more if you wish or have any questions as to the legality. But that was the thought process behind this ordinance.
Does anybody have any questions or comments or anything on either one of these?
My only comment is I wish they had done it a lot, a lot, years ago. I think this is really good to have sidewalks.
I have a question, though. You name the hierarchy of the streets. Do we have a street map that names the hierarchy?
We have it listed in the code.
Oh, it's in the code?
Mostly. Now, it hasn't been updated in a while.
Okay.
And they're defined in the code.
I was... Can you name or give me a name of Collector Street? Or I know Arterial, I'm sure, is Main Street.
I can't without looking at the code.
The only time I started looking at sidewalks when this came up. And in Stillwater, I noticed in all the construction on Perkins Road they're doing, they are... You can see that it is a six-foot sidewalk. And so to me, that was... That explained what the terminology was here a little bit.
Yeah, and that... In Stillwater, that's an ODOT project. Probably with some ADA money, but that's... They might be more than six feet, actually.
They might be, yeah.
But traffic's moving really fast and it's very dense.
Okay, do we have any other questions or comments? Do I hear a motion to recommend approval to the city commission? Okay, we have a motion. Second.
Patty?
Yes.
Neah?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Item six, public hearing, consideration and possible action regarding ordinance 492-2022, amending Perkins City Code Title 10, Planning and Zoning, Chapter 1, Definitions and General Provisions, Section 10-1-4, Definitions, and Title 10, Planning and Zoning, Chapter 7, Establishment of Districts, Article C, Commercial District, Section 10-7C-3, Use by Review to Include Provisions Regarding Small Box Discount Stores.
Ordinance 492, the thought process behind this, a small box discount store, dollar store type deal. We have dollar... We have two of them in town... Well, three, arguably. Two in one store and one next to it. I was concerned about the possibility of another one going in right out by there. So we started doing some research about regulating types of businesses. And through a bunch of help families, this is what we came up with. And it basically defines what a small box discount store is and makes it a use by review, so it's not a use by right. So this body has more authority to be involved in that process. And it also specifically states they have to be at least one mile from each other. So it's possible to put another one in town somewhere, but it would have to be a mile away.
And where would that be?
I mean, Perkins is so small.
I mean, we... It's possible. I don't know where it would be, but there's a...
I mean, like South Main Street?
Or Freeman, South Main, Freeman.
Okay. It's a mile. I mean, Perkins is one. Some places is only a mile. Not even that. Okay.
And so these, those two, did I read about a November 2nd? If... Clause where it said if they were in existence before November 2nd, 2022, that they weren't affected by that?
Yeah, I'm sure. They'd be grandfathered in.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can't go...
And they're already there.
They're not required to keep the...
Is that what brings this about? Because those two are so close together? Or just more as a proactive for the future?
Proactive for the future.
Is... These dollar store impacts that you passed out? I read this when you sent it out several weeks ago. And I haven't reread it. But is this... Is one mile... Where did you get the one mile? Is it in other ordinances that you've... Other cities or something like that?
We talked about it.
We talked about it. Other cities... Of course, larger cities have a larger footprint, so they have a larger circumference. So I wanted to make it where it was possible, but not next to them. I mean, it's... It is possible, you know, if you're a property owner outside of one mile.
Well, what I'm thinking is, you know, the lots along 177 north of town, you know, all those commercial lots. That's within a mile, I think.
Maybe not the very south end ones, but possibly, yes. I'd have to... I went on Google Earth and drew a...
Yeah, do your one-mile radius.
Yes.
There's only two other cities in Oklahoma with this type of ordinance, and that's Tulsa and Oklahoma City. And Tulsa has... And Tulsa was a leader nationally on this type of ordinance because of the proliferation of dollar stores in North Tulsa and the complete lack of grocery stores. And the, what they call, food desert that's been created because, you know, I was walking through a dollar store and I thought, this is... What if this was, you know, what I had to feed my family? My choices, my selection. And so Tulsa really led the way nationally. And a lot of other cities have followed in other states. And mainly in the first big cities. Tulsa's ordinance is very complicated for political reasons, I think, when they did it. Kansas City is the model that we used because it's simple. And they've come a long ways. Now, people like us, I think, are recognizing and this organization that put out this... These flyers, if you ever go to the Institute for Local Self-Reliance, they have a lot of good information. And they were talking about how now the small towns are realizing the damage that... or impacts that can happen from these type of stores. And so the thought is, and I think it's important for you guys to think about and the commission to think about. On the one hand, you would... I think the use by review is important.
Yeah.
The distance restriction is important as well, so that you don't have four dollar stores on a corner. But there could be a question as to how much distance. You know, and in Tulsa, it's a mile. And in some of the bigger cities, it's 10,000 feet. So you guys can decide what you think. The reason I'm bringing this up is because the response I've gotten from other small-town city attorneys is, well, then they just go build in county and you miss the sales tax revenue. You know, they just won't build in your city. They'll build out in county.
And outside the city limits.
And that is a risk that you take, you know? So the distance restriction, I think, is relevant. But on the other hand, if you... Especially for the way that we're situated now, how many dollar stores are you going to allow in that area of your grocery store?
Does this use by review give us the authority to change that one-mile limit, either plus or minus? Or is that something that's going to be in the code that we have to adhere to?
That's a separate provision.
Okay. But I think you could, today, make a motion to amend that distance in this.
Yeah, well, if you... If you guys... You can recommend this ordinance... You can recommend an ordinance to go forward to the commission as written with the amendment of anything you want to tell me. And you could say, as written, but less than a mile or more than a mile. And then I would rewrite it and take that to the commission. And then they would do whatever they think. You know, they would have the same discussion. But like everything else, they would have the recommendation from you.
Right, but if we go ahead and approve this and one comes in that's just within that one mile or, you know, something. I think the way I've read this, they have to meet that one mile before they even... Before it even comes to us. Is that the way I agree?
Well, yes, I think that's probably the way it's written.
I think that's the way it's written or that's the way I took it.
And you could amend that distance.
Well, we can now.
Now.
I mean, yeah.
Yeah.
But I was just wondering if there was any way... I guess they could go to a board of adjustment?
What would their hardship be?
I'm sorry?
The hardship might be the question. Is it always is on a board of adjustment? But would that...
Yeah. I wouldn't think that would be a likely remedy for them in Perkins.
My concern is I think we may be tying the hands of future growth. So I'd like to see more... More authority given to the planning commission, the city commission in regard to this matter. I mean, we look like good ideas right now, but five years from now, 10 years now, it may be a constraint that we may have to deal with. I just want to make sure we're not limiting competition.
Yeah. Maybe we could table this and you can provide us a map with the one-mile circles so we can see. I mean, which way? What that one mile is going to do?
You know, if we were to go on this tonight, I'd have trouble saying yes.
Yeah. Yeah, I really have trouble with the one mile because to me, it takes in almost all of Perkins.
Well, one of your options is to table it and to consider the one... One of your options is to table it and consider the one-mile restriction at the next meeting. Or you can decide, if you want, what you think is a reasonable distance restriction.
That would be...
And that's what we could take to the commission. And you could even... I mean, it sounds like it's a good idea. I would draw a map. Take a circumference map maybe to the commission so they have some... With different distances on it, you know, so...
If you look at... I mean...
Do you think we could figure it out, like now, on our phones? Look at it?
Sure. Yeah, I think you could do it amongst yourselves. I mean, look at this... This, I mean, does one mile even really make a difference as far as competition in a grocery store? In my opinion, it was making a difference to the direction that the leadership sees Perkins going in. When I came up with this idea, when I was thinking about it, it was, do we want... What types of businesses do we want in Perkins? And what does... Do we want Perkins to look like in the future? You know, if you look at Main Street, for instance, this is probably where the one mile came in my mind. You have First National Bank, really nice brick building. You have Perkins Drug, really nice brick building. You have Perkins Primary Care, real nice brick building. And then across the street, you just put in a metal building, Dollar General. And, you know, four dollar store, I should say. Because they just, you know, pop up. That was my thought, is to try to give the elected officials latitude in controlling what goes where. It's just, I was trying to look into the future. What do we want Perkins to look like? How do we want it to grow? I'm for us having more control over what goes in. But I'm just concerned about tying our hands with this ordinance. And I would definitely like to think about it. And there are ways around. The, you know, the small-box store, if they do certain amount of fresh food and they do more than the... What's specified in here, then they're outside of that. Definition. So if you... It just depends on what... It just depends on what the commission desires for Perkins. This was simply an idea. And the one mile was somewhat arbitrary, probably, based on Main Street.
Well, I can tell you the one mile makes the difference. The one-mile limitation makes a difference in Tulsa.
And we're talking a lot, heavier density, they'll too.
Right. But as far as, you know, in the smaller... In this area, a mile apart would be, I think, even more beneficial to...
To the residents?
To the grocery... To the grocery stores.
And these types of stores have negative impacts on grocery stores that sell fresh foods. And these types of stores, the data show, don't necessarily serve an underserved population. They can bring that population with them.
Yes, that's a good point.
Which was the... So that was my thought process for whatever it's worth.
I like your thought process. Because of the grocery store we have here, we want to make sure that it could, well, stay... Stay the size it is. But wouldn't it be great if it had the business... Enough business that it could expand?
And maybe go up a level and produce. I don't know... I'm sure there's levels of stuff in a grocery store, but, you know, maybe we could talk to them or work some kind of a deal out where they go up, you know, a level. And... But if these types of stores are taking business from them...
That's right.
Business is business.
You know, you... Yes, I understand what you're saying about outside the city. You're going to lose that sales tax, right? Is that the right term? But...
It's a possibility, but it's...
But what about... Then you have to go, yes, but what... Isn't the grocery store important to us? Which is more important? You know, and there comes a time when sometimes you have to go, money isn't everything. It's taking care of the small business that we have.
You know, I like the ideas being proposed, but I would really like to see more flexibility built into it for the city commission to be able to...
Well, I'm trying to think of how to do that.
How do you think? I don't know. I'm not...
Yeah, no, I'm trying to think.
I don't think you can... I don't think there's a scenario where the city commission could say... Or the planning commission could say, we don't want that type of business here just because we don't want that type of business here. It would have to be defined.
Can I ask a question? Are we talking about one mile as the crow flies?
Yeah.
So from family, from the existing area where the dollar stores are, as the crow flies, one mile is like right at the intersection between Rusty's and Pink County Bank?
Stumbo and Main.
Thank you, Stumbo.
Right past the...
Close office.
Oh, as the crow flies.
Close office. Straight line.
Yeah. So it's probably like maybe two miles than if you're going by.
The road. And I'm not... And like I said, I'm not married to the one mile. But we kind of had to start somewhere.
I don't know that that's enough. I would...
Exactly.
I would go even longer than a... Further than a mile.
Let me just point out that you have built into any use by review is your ability to say, we don't think this... There's three things that the ordinance requires you to find to approve this use, this special use by review. One is that the value and qualities of the neighborhood surrounding the use by review are not substantially injured. Two, the use by review is consistently the intent and purpose of a particular zone to promote public health, safety, general welfare. And three is the use by review is in keeping with the land use plan of the city.
Oh, okay, that was my question. So that does give us the city planning commission, city commission, some leeway and some...
Exactly.
Some power over the ordinance. If nobody comes to the public hearing, can they find that?
Yeah, that's what they would have to find on a use by review. Where is it? It was in our ordinance twice, actually, and I took it out a second time. OJB, conditions of representation. I... Use by review may be granted only upon finding that. And it's those three things. The neighborhood, it's consistent with our land use plan, and it's consistent with the intended purpose of the zone, particular zone, to promote public health, safety, and general welfare. So it does give you... And you and the city commission, because both of you would have to approve it, the ability to... Or I should say, both of you would have to prove it. That's not a correct statement, but... Both of you would be considering it. So it does give you some flexibility there. What this reminds me of, actually, is more like the medical marijuana statute in ordinances. You know, the state statute says you... They have to keep a distance of 1,000 feet from school or from a church. And from, you know, there's a distance requirement in that. The Oklahoma Supreme Court has maintained... Has upheld a city ordinance going further than the state statute and saying, and you have to stay 1,000 feet, I think it is, from each other or, you know, a certain distance from each other because they don't want medical marijuana places on every corner either. So this is kind of consistent with that. And because what you will have coming before you is an implication about a particular piece of property, you're not going to be able to say, yeah, we just think you're too close to... You know, your only reason is you're too close to something else. We already have one. Unless you can find those other reasons, you know, then you're kind of stuck. So even if you just try to make it a distance that's not...
And this...
Not going to end up with them real close to each other.
And this doesn't say they can't come in. This just says you need to dedicate at least 15% of your shelf space to fresh or frozen food. So you bring in something that's going to benefit the people of Perkins versus bringing something in that may have a negative impact.
I think if enough cities did this, it would force that the small box discount stores to have to change their model and actually bring in the stuff that is not as lucrative that grocery stores have to pay for or do pay for, like produce and fresh food and healthy things.
Does it... Does it say... I didn't read the whole thing. Does it say down here anywhere? Like what Dollar Tree... What percentage Dollar Tree does have of frozen? Is it... I mean...
They don't have... Okay, if you look at our definition...
Unprocessed.
Yeah.
There's zero.
They have no...
Got it.
Right.
They have like frozen pizzas.
Yeah.
Box goods.
Oh, fresh frozen food, yeah.
Got it.
Yeah. It would... Fresh or frozen food would not be included in...
I feel like there are different types of dollar types where I have actually seen frozen chicken and frozen vegetables.[1718.42]
I don't see that. That's not fresh frozen, that's processed frozen. The way, okay, if you look at the way we define a small-box discount store in C, 10-1.4 on the first page, C, says fresh or frozen food means food for human consumption that is unprocessed or otherwise in its raw state. And then this is what I was meaning to point to. Food that was quickly frozen while still fresh.
So if you flash-froze chicken, that would work.
That would work.
But they couldn't count their eggs in milk and butter as 15? Like they could never?
Maybe.
Yeah, I think it would. It's just that it has to be at least 15% of their shelf space and it's not anywhere near in most dollar store type concepts.
Going back to the three points, I can't remember the terminology. Are those and, 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 or are they or, or?
Let me go to that again. It has to, the commission would have to find all three, their ands.
So that they're and statements, okay.
You can.
No, hold on. I, I, I'm looking at, let me find the right one. Which order I changed it. A use by review, yes, it's all three. I expect I added the word and. On B, after B, too. I added that and, yeah.
Well, I don't know exactly what distance to put on it, but I think the distance is very important. We should go forward with the distance.
I agree.
So are we seeing that we need a map with circles drawn on showing what a mile looks like or a mile and a half or two? Or what, what do we want to?
Just the distance that was given to us. I think that is just the minimum that I would be comfortable with accepting.
I can tell you the east, west, all the stuff. Although not as good. So is that, there's Ampride. So this is just east of.
Trees.
Yeah, it's east of the big clump of trees.
East of the what?
A big clump of trees.
On Highway 33.
So that's your mile that you measured from there.
From.
So, Twin Lakes on 33. Everybody know where that is? South OSU property and there's the two ponds. So that could be on the west side between Twin Lakes and Ampride. On the south side, which is in the city limits.
What about going east? Is that still in the city limits?
No, they'd be outside the city limits by, I don't know how to.
So technically.
You have to go, you know, to fart around with it.
So technically, if the city limits are a half mile east, they could put it right there.
Where do you want to end the point?
Go over east from.
From more east. Oh, east, you know, that's west. Let's go the other east. Other east.
It's going to put it like halfway.
You know, halfway between Rush Creek and Fairgrounds, about.
Well, it's going to be non-issue, you know, once it leaves the city limits.
It would be outside the city limits.
So is the, the purpose of this, is it just the way things are currently? Is that we don't want another Dollar General and the other combination as, as the city is right now? And so you're trying to, you're trying to plan for the future? I don't know if I'm making sense. Do we, we don't want any more Dollar General stores or box discount stores?
Or they at least have to have some distance between them.
Right.
Or they have to dedicate shelf space to fresh food that serves our residents.
Or they have to convince you that, well, right now, they could just do it. It's a right, it's a use.
Yeah, right now, they can just come in.
But if you, if you have the use by review, they could come in and convince you that they met all these requirements and you would go, yep, you're right, we need another, another small discount, small-box discount store. That's a possibility, but.
How do you get?
You could do it a little back.
I just don't think we do.
Problem right now is they just could do it across, they could do it anywhere.
Okay, you're convincing me, I guess.
If you did a half a mile, just for.
I just put you down about the sunny corner.
On Main, well, it'd be just past that. Right at Casey's and then south on Main, right at First National Banks, what used to be Stroud Bank. If, I'm just throwing that out there for an example. But if, yeah, the mile puts it right about the post office on Main Street and south, or Hall of Knight Street.
Is there any more discussion?
Can I, I ask on the red line, a copy on B, why was that sentence taken out? No use by review shall be granted by the.
You're talking about E?
B.
Okay, why is? Oh, wait, yes, okay. We're talking about B on, on page two. Okay, the way that it was worded was, or that is worded, I should say.
Is.
No use by review shall be granted by the city commission until the planning commission first finds. And that is nebulous language in my mind because it's saying that the city, that, and let, it gives you veto power. So if the, if the, which is not the way it typically works. You're supposed to be a recommending body. But the way this is worded, it says, this commission doesn't even get to consider it unless you find these things. And I don't think that's what was intended. And because I don't think there's any, I can't think of the logic behind making this different from any other thing that you do. And so I, I changed that to a, a use by review may be granted only upon a finding that. So that it's the finding that you guys would make and recommend, and then it would have to be a finding that the commission makes. So I, I just thought that language was unnecessary and confusing.
Okay. So a use by review may be granted, and that would be granted by the city commission?
Yes.
Okay.
It would be recommended by the planning commission.
Or not.
Or not. And then city commission makes the file.
Anything else?
I have one more. On page three, actually, I have two more. On page three, under, on the red line part where E.
That, I just took that out because it's, it's in our ordinance twice. It's completely the same thing that's in B.
Yes, yes.
So I just took it out because it wasn't.
Okay.
That's all.
And on F, it says shall be filled with the city manager or his designate, but building inspector was taken out?
Yeah, that is weird. We don't ever take by, the, these aren't filed with the planning commissions typically through the building inspector.
Okay.
That's just kind of weird.
Okay, I don't know.
Normally, you know, if we were going to have a planning department, it would be the planning department, but that kind of.
Oh, it's the building inspector anyways.
And so that's, so I changed that to the city manager or. His designate, so that if he ever gets a planning department, he can designate it to the planning department.
And I don't do buildings.
So your left hand could.
Charlie Butler does it.
So we got somebody now, okay.
Your left hand could approve, could approve what the.
I just thought, I thought while we were mending this.
Yeah. That makes, look weird to me.
That is really.
That's funny.
I appreciate you digging into the details of ordinances and cleaning things up. I appreciate that.
Okay, if there's no more discussion or questions, do I hear a motion?
Do you guys want to discuss a distance requirement or?
Yeah, we can.
Now a distance?
We can table it until the next meeting and to CMS.
Sorry.
Or we can.
I don't, I don't think we should.
Or we can change the distance, or we can recommend approval the way it's written.
I'd be nervous in tabling it just because things pop up very quickly and an application could be put in before the next meeting. And if we really truly want to, or not permit that from happening.
I'm happy with what we got personally.
The mile?
Yeah, I recommend it that we.
I just want to make sure we got consensus before I.
What'd you say, Joan? I recommend that we.
Okay.
Take it out. Okay, it's written, I think.
Do I hear a motion?
Before we can say so moved?
No.
No.
The lawyer does not like so moved.
Do you know how hard it is?
So moved what?
I make the motion that we accept agenda item, approved agenda item six.
I second that.
How about you approve the ordinance?
Approve the ordinance into item six, all right.
You guys are lucky you don't have me here every time. The commission has to put up with me.
You better not review or.
I'm sorry, you're right. The motion, can I suggest an amendment to your motion? That you move to recommend approval.
Okay, yes.
Of ordinance number 492. Say that.
I, I. What you said.
I motion.
I make the motion that we move the recommendation forward for.
Ordinance.
Ordinance 492.
I second it.
Thank you.
I forget where I am.
Patty?
No.
Janita?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes. I appreciate you sticking to your guns.
Item seven, new business under the Open Meeting Act. This agenda item is authorized only for matters not known about or which could not have been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda or any revised agenda. Do we have any new business?
No business for me.
No new business. Then I will, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion that we adjourn.
Sally?
Yes.
Janita?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Lisa?
I want to, I want to wait till that was turned off.
We're still on streaming.
Yeah, I'm going to go turn that off. Just wanted to run those up there.
I will stop.